Okay, please settle everybody, everyone. Okay, the 57th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Counselor Joylyn Mercedes Balabas, followed by the singing "The Lupang Hinirang", then the Kageyan di Oro March. Please rise.
Okay, let us bow down our heads and let's feel the presence of our Almighty. Almighty and most loving Father, we thank you for today. Father, thank you very much for all the blessings that we receive, and we ask you, Father, that you forgive us all our sins, including those of the past. Father, to this session, we pray that you will intercede in all our undertakings, especially our discussion. Give us wisdom and knowledge in order that we have an orderly session. Father, we also ask you that you lead your Holy Spirit to be with us so that it will guide us, teach us, and protect us. Father, we have so many things to ask you. We pray that you will provide us in accordance with your will in a proper time. We also ask you, Father, that you give us strength and strengthen our faith in you. And this we ask through your Son Jesus Christ and Lord Savior. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger G. Abaday, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, on official business, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go-King in this post, Honorable O.C. P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern I. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lordes Esgaani, Honorable Joylyn Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Zuse T. G. Magtahas Dabah. For the Ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng Mga Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elsano, City Escape Federation President. There is quorum, Madam Presiding Officer.
Quorum is hereby certified. Good afternoon, councilors. Good afternoon, our friends from media, our guests who are here today. Good afternoon also to those watching us. Maayong hapon sa tanan. Majority floor leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have now the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, the beautiful Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Joselyn Bebat Rodriguez.
Tawa mo, katurin siya. Ay, before, mayroon na majority floor leader. I'm sorry. Katawa siya. Yakokatawan. Anyway, before we proceed, majority floor leader, I forgot. It is the birthday of a counselor, Ian Nakaya. Okay? So who is going to lead the song? Birthday song? Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, are you there? Pareho sila galan. Okay. Ah, pareho tin dog.
Mulang yapon ha, mulang yapon. I will just guide the singing and you'll do the rendition. For the birthday celebrant, Madam Presiding Officer, we wish him more and more years of celebrating life, Counselor Christian Ian Nakaya. With that, in our minds, Counselor Bernie Bitok Bitok will provide us the rendition of the song "Happy Birthday".
Saan papirmayanig in may gala? Alright, everybody, let's sing "Happy Birthday". Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Emotional. Happy... Ah, re, re, faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. How old are you?
Okay. Okay, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, yeah. Counselor Ian.
Okay, let us proceed. The Majority floor leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council, friends in the media, our visitors in the gallery, people, kagaya, and duro. May I move, Madam Chair, to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this honorable council and to consider the furnishing of copies thereof as reading itself.
Any second objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move for its approval.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
On the special report portion, Madam Chair, there are three members of the City Council who intimated a desire to render special report. First is Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, who will be reporting on CDO Green Belt. It can do it of walking walkways among shopping malls to decongest traffic and promote physical activities. Second is Counselor James Judith, who will be reporting on Tree of Life marker redevelopment. And lastly, but not the least, is Counselor Bernie Espasia, who will be reporting on...
Food parks.
Food parks and rules and regulation on food stores. So this is the... These are the honorable members who are rendering the report this afternoon. So may I request Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya be recognized first, Madam Chair.
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. One of the favorite spots of Counselor James Judith, Madam Presiding Officer, is the Green Belt in Makati, in Ayala. And Counselor Bernie would attest to that. Counselor Maria Lordes Esgaani is excited to perhaps see Kageyan di Oro, that we have our own elevated pedestrian channels or walkways that will perhaps ease the traffic and will add on life to every person who use this facility, considering that there would be physical activities from mall to mall or from areas where they are needed. I am making this special report, Madam Presiding Officer, to perhaps replicate a project that has been very effective in Ayala area, the so-called Green Belt. It's a green belt not because Ayala has its own theme color, green, but it also showcased trees, parks, and places where you can appreciate the scenery between and among malls connecting from each other. So therefore, why not follow it through and replicate it in Kageyan di Oro City? There is a plan already that has been going around in the executive, in the roads, traffic administration, and even amplified during our joint committee meeting with Counselor General Romeo Calizo, when we have had our discussions with RTA and the City Planning and Development Office, that even in the past and to the present, this elevated channel would be perhaps a great help to the city of Kageyan di Oro and to the users, pedestrians, as well, Madam Presiding Officer. But if it will remain as a plan without action, Madam Presiding Officer, we know what will happen. It is still part of the blueprint, a plan, perhaps foreseeable or unforeseeable in the future on the basis that there is no action. It's a challenge, Madam Presiding Officer, we have because we have to engage discussions with the malls, owners, administrators, and those who would be affected by this project. If we are in agreement with this concept or idea that should be implemented, replicated in the city of Kageyan di Oro that would connect Limkitkay, SM, Gaisano, Centrio, and other establishments that may form part in this Green Belt in the city of Kageyan di Oro, then we have to act, Madam Presiding Officer. And the action should be include or incorporate the project proposal in our AIP, in our city development plan, and in our budgeting even for 2024 and for in the future, even if we secure loan for this purpose just to implement every piece and pieces of the plan. So therefore, while we are at it, Madam Presiding Officer, why not all those involved in this vision perhaps work on it at their level? Like for example, Public Works, collaborate with DPWH, and infra-plans that is necessary to catapult this project in the right perspective and places on traffic, how things should be connected to have a proper flow of people and at the same time, our motorists. Our side on planning, we engage with the owners of the malls, establishments, personalities, even institutions that would be participants in this aspiration so that all things will be implemented. And the executive, of course, Madam Presiding Officer, including the local finance committee, the city mayor, and all other functionaries, including RTA, should participate in the plan as well as in its implementation. So with all, including the finance, ways and means for the budgeting, with all the mentioned committees and functionaries, Madam Presiding Officer, we hope that we start the ball rolling and do what is necessary for these aspirations be a reality in Kageyan di Oro. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. Yes, even outside Philippines, those who have been outside, of course, Manila, there's already this, ano, there's already this walkways, you know, which is very, very accessible to their constituents. And if you wish to park somewhere else, danay diretso, amangian. So we will have to refer this to the committee? Yes, you'd like to say something? Yes, Counselor Malvern Espasia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sa atong tanan, maayong hapon, sa mga nanaw, unaminaw, karoon sa online, maayong hapon. Madam Chair, di na ko mapugnan ang kogaling to manifest a manifestation of support or a very good report, Madam Chair. Actually, kung di lang di ko sayo, boragosasan niya sa mga project ni Congressman Rufus Rodriguez. Kaninanganin nga isumpay-sumpay. Madam Chair, as a chairman, also sa climate change, ang, ay, ay, wholeheartedly endorse this plan, Madam Chair. Kipara sa kuwa, switching to walking. Labi na karoon nga, number one, grabe ang traffic. Kulang na kayo ang espasyo din sa Main Atunga City. I think ang pagdibertput sa katauhan nga magbaklay for more of our shorter journeys helps to protect biodiversity. Ang nakanindot ani, it creates less noise, less air pollution, and results in fewer emissions that are warming the atmosphere. The atmosphere. We can help to protect our green spaces by showing its importance to communities and to plant and wildlife. Mora, Madam Chair, again, as the chairman on the climate change, dako kaya ko pagsoportahaning a proyekto, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Malvern Espasia. If you notice, kanang walkway, they're shaded. Nakadili ka maulanan, dili ka mainitan, then you just continue walking to your destination, oh? Okay, working as a nurse in the US, mauna magitna. We park our car sa kami, then we go to where the destination we wanted to go by walking, by walking. So we refer this to the committee?
The committees that I have... To the committees that I have mentioned?
Yeah, the infra, is that infra?
Yeah, Public Works.
Public Works, intra?
It can be a joint committee, Madam Presiding Officer, too. And if I may ask that it should be led by our committee on planning and include the Public Works Committee, the Traffic Committee, the Finance Committee, the Ways and Means Committee. And Counselor Bernie is also whispering that she...
Climate change.
He should be included in his committee, Madam Presiding Officer.
So to the different committees. Okay, noted. Thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya. So our next will deliver his, ano, his privilege speech is Counselor Attorney James Judith. You're recognized?
Madam Chair, sa atong tinahod nga BC Mayor, Joselyn Bebat Rodriguez, ang atong Majority floor leader, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas, ang atong tinahod nga mga kauban sa konseho, ang atong mga bisita, ang atong mga gingsakman sa presa nga nasa likod nga bahin sa atong gallery, og sa atong pinagka katauhan sa nabayan sa Kageyan di Oro sa inyo tanan, maupay. Tinanan nila, Madam Chair. Maupay pagpalotput sa tugid niyang observasyon ni Counselor John Michael Elsano. Pero tiyao, Madam Chair, sa umaabot nga Desembre 16, atong pagta-mud o pagdumdom, sa ikadusi nga tuig nga kasumarang sa pinakangilngi nga panghitabo, sukad-sukad sa tibo kasaysayan sa atong nabayan, ang kadaut nga dala ni Tay Punsendong nga Adunay International name nga Washington. Kung madumduman, Madam Chair, sa gabii pa sa Desembre 15, 2011, walay puas ang ulan. Mukusog, muhinay, pero walay pagunda. Hantu na lang ni abot pagkaugma sa Desembre 16, sa may sayo sa Kabundagon, alas 2, kapinkong kulang. Ngit-ngit pa ang palibot ditto sa may unahan sa Kageyan River, Adunay kusog na bulog. Mauna na to na sairan, Adunay kusog na bulog sa tubig, ugang pagbuton ini, opagbagsak ini, dia sa sityo kala-kala, barangay makasandi. Ngamoy na ilhan karoon nga ground zero. Basis sa maubaling nga trahedya, Madam Chair, Adunay isa kalibo kapin nga kinabuhay nga nakalas. Pilapod ka libo. Pilapod ka libo baling nga samaran or naangol. Pilapod ka gatos ang missing, hantod karoon. Nankaroon, salain nga bahin, Madam Chair. Pwede man po na to dumdomon ang mapait nga kaghahapon. Ang unsa ina hitabok bahin ani nga trahedya. Pwede na to dumdomon salahi nga pamaagi. Dili lang sa kinabuhay nga nakalas, kundi sa kinabuhay nga naluwas o nasalbar. Basis sa usakapunuhan, usakapunuhan sa mangga, nga sa atong pagduki-duki, nakasalbar og nakaluwas og 50 kapin nga individual, Madam Chair. Maupitaw tungkol ani nga talag sa unbaling nga storya, dinis sa atong kasaysayan, gimuan og marker ang maong isla di Oro. Kaysa isla di Oro maning kaning manggaha. So gimuag marker, gikuralan, kipara, maunis ay simbolo sa atong paglaong. Apan sa akong pagbisita, Madam Chair, sa maong lugar, akong dako nga pagkadismaya, kaya ang maubaling nga Tree of Life marker, kitawang Tree of Life, kaysa 'yung ang kasi 50 kabukinabuhay ang iyang nasalbar. Nahimo naman noon siyang, murag napasagda, Madam Chair, kenaimo naman siya ug murag... kena himo na man siya, oh more na tulaan sa kabao, lubuganan sa baboy, ang palibot tagas na kay mga sagbot, daot na bali ang marker, naanay garas, hanap na, Madam Chair, tagas og sagbot, gihitan pagitbali sa mga kanding, oh ba ka, Madam Chair, gihimo pagit sa damukanan sa mga gamit nga din na maga, ah sa mga butangan din na magamit. Ilabayanan pagit siya sa mga basura sa atong mga kaiksunan nga nadyan na ni moyo, dihangdapi. Mauna nakahukom ko, Madam Chair, nga siguro maayong kena himo magutkenisyang simbolo nga atong i-redevelop ang maubaling Tree of Life nga marker. Butangan na to bali, ipalibot na to granite tiles sa mga palibot, butangan na to suga, butangan na to stairs, butangan na to stanchion, butangan na to benches, butangan na to bronze nga marker ang maubaling area. Nagreact sila, Busto, pwede siguro nga dito napunta sa market na kaya, di sila nagreact sila sa computer, Busto. More nagreact mga si Consell Roger Abada, isa sa kootor ni ini. So morning, ang akong nahukman, Madam Chair, sa pagredevelop ni ini, mauna nagtukmod kanako sa pagdasun sa Usaka Sugiyot Ordinan sa paghimo og mini park or pagredevelop sa mong area sa Tulukka Katuyuan. Una, mahimong simbolo ang maubaling lugar, ang Tree of Life, simbolo sa atong paglaon, simbolo sa atong pagbangon, simbolo sa atong pagasdagikan sa mapait bali nga panghitabo. Ikadua, sa pagdumdum sa unsa'y naitabok sa sendong, pero sa positibo nga pamaagi. Ikatulo, sa pagtuko do'gusakat tourist attraction or site, nga din ang atong katauhan, o ang atong mga dumudong, ang atong mga bisita, pwede mo atuan ang lugar, dala sa ilang pagatuh, Madam Chair, pwede nila makita ang unsa katahom ang atong Cagayan River, o pwede po nila makita kung unsa kapatsada ang bag ulang nga gisuban na to nga Rio di Oro Boulevard. Mo keni, 'yan nagdasun kita, bag ulang. Busto, na dawat na ma siguro sa'yo mabuatan? Atong kitason, ang kining ordinan sa nga, ang tawag na to, the Tree of Life Marker redevelopment. Kini lang, ang ako nga pagta-mud, kaya happy man. Pila na lang di tanon ka, dua kabulan kapin, ato na pong pagdumdum sa unsa'y naitabok sa sendong, sa atong dakbayan, atong Desembre 16, 2011, nga nakapatayog sa atong tibook dakbayan tungod sa maong amang hilngi nga panghitabo. Dinin na lakukuto, Madam Chair, og dagang salamat og astang Cagayan Dioro.
Thank you, Councilor Attorney James Judith. So is this already in the committee level? Not yet. What is your prayer?
Yes, Madam Chair, repres sa Tulukka, joint committees, Madam Chair. Disaster resiliency of Councilor Marvin Esparsia, the tourism committee of Councilor Jeroa Pasqual, the environment committee of Councilor Roger Abada.
Okay, so those are the committees, refer to the committees. Anyway, thank you very much, the Tree of Life. So the next, huh? Nakatawa habes, Councilor Gurley. That's one. And anyway, let us proceed. Councilor Bernie Esparsia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Salamat to the Majority Floor Leader nga naapas ni nga special report. Dali on na ako ni Madam Chair. But before the special report, sayang wala man si kuya Councilor George Go King. Magpasalamat lang tan ako sa iya, Madam Chair, sa successful na po ni PCL, sa sibong nga wala megi pasagdan tanan. Bisan, bisan pa man ay uban na bilin zero plano pero ang problema sila, kaya magshiring, kaya magshiring sila sa hotel. Pero wagin na gi pasagdan, Madam Chair. Kung nga, kuya George Go King, kung asa mga karoon, dagay salamat sa imong kanunay nga pag alaga o pag atiman ka na mo. Dagang salamat, again, Madam Chair, sayaha. Anyway, Madam Chair, this last weekend, ma siguro na ako nakita, or last week lang, nagpost ang City Information Office, kung kalokomagtan o five days ago man, regarding aning mga fresco bars or katong mga parking lots sa Usaka Hotel, kung asa gi issuehan sa RCB og ordinance violation receipts or OVR, tungo di ay kaya kaning mga stall owners, wala din sila mga business permit, pastilan. And I commend the head of RCB attorney, Egay Uy, ang team leader nga si boss Antonio Resma Jr., and even atong PNP. Actually, Madam Chair, kani nga area, medyo na napunisay issues previously kay labina sa mga security, tamakita na to nga overcrowded. Takaron lately, mo din eto nakita nga, wala din siya business permit sa per, ang per stall niya, kay parking lot pa man isasak hotel, sa Usaka Hotel, nagiconvert lang. Now, I already actually personally message Sir Antonio Resma Jr. about it. My, my, my question was, unsa kiday palisiya ning ingani day nga mga klasinga negosyo, kay naano man nga dagan may nakalusot nga, wala man din mga business permit din sila? Well, ang tubog sa kuha ni Sir Antonio Resma nga, ang uban nga mga food parks, ang organizer mismo ang mo-work para sa ilahang business permit. Naibawan na to karoon nga, na na'y mga issue nga ng gawas karoon ni ini. Now, to be honest, Madam Chair, dako bigyan isang tabang sa Cagayanon, bayan nga, may nalang taon kaysa kumorintabehyo ka dako nga, nga space, sa mall, or sa mga tindahan sa dibisoria, it will really cost a lot. Labina kung ginagmay ka nga negosyante. That's why this idea of kaning mga food park is really a very good idea to help also some Cagayanons nga makanegosyo sa may aning ginagmay. Kaya lang, I would like to borrow and akong i-amplify kining suggestion sa RCB. Now, una, Madam Chair, ang problema sa mga food parks karoon di man tanan, ang problema karoon, wala na siya mo agi sa obo ang layout. Pasabot, what ako balokong unsa kidang kadako, unsa kago't, unsa ang capacity, ang CR komusta ba kaya baniya ang CR para sa kadaghan sa tao, then the security, pila manggyuday dapat sa usaka lugar, suwing ani kadaghan ang tao, pila pa dapat, na paggy dapat bouncer, na paggy dapat ah security guard, gani dapat ang security guard po't tanawon po't kung unsa bani nga security guard, kana paggyong musukulsa, kaya basiunyag, kung pakuratan sa nimo, madluksa. Ah, also, like I said, sa ingani nga mga proseso, again, musuportatan ini kaya nakasuporta man ta sa kanang mga gagmay negosyante. Ang problema sa janigawas karoon, Madam Chair, ang naitabok po sa ingani na ay usaka organizer, sabayla in terms of organizer. Organizer o na'y usaka, tao nga siya mo'y magparinta sa tanan. Maayok kung ang tanan medyo gabayad. Kaya momo po di lang promise nga kami na'y mo provide sa security, sa maintenance tanan. Pero kasagara po naitabok sa uban, the problem is, what if some stall owners, wala sila dili kabayad. Sului tunguban stall owners nga gabayad, pero tungo keng uban wala amang kabayad. Ang organizer nagsalikrapo siya sa rinta, so on tendency, ang katong gasakto bayad, mura po hinuoy magpatak-patak na hinuon, nga para mo bayad sa mga facilities, ogsama ng bouncer, o mga security guard, sului po siya. Now, I want to protect also, kaning mga gagmay nga mga stall owners, nga sila po, nagbigusyo rapo bayan sila. So dapat na'tay sakto palisia para po dili po sila maatau-atau, og dili lang po basta-basta ang ubang mga negosyante nga magcreate o mga food parks, kaya eventually di ay kung di di makaya, di na din magparamdam, biyaan na din nilang nagaling uban. I know na uban mga dili lang kani, na uban mga food parks sa una munang nangasirado, kaya nawala na, kaya nawala na ang marketing which they promise, nawala na ang katong nagbayad sa kurinti, sa tubig, kuguban pa, kaya ni sibat na. So, my prayer, Madam Chair, monang konseren ko ani, because we all know that Cagayan Dioro, dili man kita ang direct sa mga tourist destination kay sa mga neighboring areas sa man, but I know nga dre man gyud tanan, mulanding ang naatadre ang mag-stay, ang gikan sa pantalan sa airport. So ang ato ang maoffer sa mga tourists is kaning mga ingani, mga bars, kaning mga alfresco, mga stall, na mga, na mga ingani, nga witches, tana makahatag po og mindot nga experience sa atong mga turista. So kung ma magkagubot, kung baho ang CR, dili organize, na'y chaos, it will put a bad day sa mga turista, Madam Chair. So my prayer, Madam Chair, is just to review maybe our ordinance or maybe is gutan ni siya, I don't know kung sa trade and commerce ba ni siya, nga ato ng istriktuhon, magbuhat gyutao palisia ani. Prayer na ba kanang, o sa magisakto, tanawang layout, pating guta. Sabagay kung single pa noong kaganahan, noong ka ng guta, kaya magbangit-bangit ka sa mga elbows, anak. Oh, pero kaming mga kuhan, mas mayub, lagyugid, pila isa kadupa, kaya di mi ganan na idistorbo sa mga historya. But kining aside, Madam Chair, again, hopefully, Madam Chair, sa proper committee, atong balikan ang palisia sa mga ingani nga klasinga negosyo. Tapos, I encourage, maybe later na sa committee hearing, nga mo agi gapo no'ko obo para makita na to ang layout, makita na to ang number of chairs, ang sakto nga ratio, ni Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Bernie Esparsia. Refer to the Committee on Trade and Commerce, Ustara. Okay, so any more comment? I hear none. So Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor again.
Okay, so let us proceed to our business ready. And item number one, Turks.
Item number one is proposed ordinance number 2023-314. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uy, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to sign the certificate of acceptance and turnover with the Department of Public Works and Highways Unified Project Management Office Flood Control Management Cluster, represented by its project director Ramon A. Ariola III, covering the turnover of the completed facilities, structures, inclusive of water distribution lines, drainage structures, roads, pavements, impaction works, slope protection for the use of the Pagatpat resettlement site, Phase One, implemented under the flood risk management project for Cagayan Dioro River, Framed CDOR Contract Package III, Kauswagan Carmen Balulang Nazaret Makasanding, located in Sitio Pamilihi, barangay Pagatpat, this city. And for this purpose, repealing ordinance number 14562-2023.
Move for the approval of this ordinance number 2023-314, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item two, Turks.
Item number two is proposed ordinance number 2023-315, approving the development permit DP of Intalyo State's Phase Two subdivision project located in barangay Canetuan, this city, with an area of 84,433.70 square meters, containing 471 units under PD 957, as applied for by the WECOM Magnum Properties Incorporated, represented by Engineer Jericho G. Lorenzo, subject to the compliance of the conditions imposed by the City Housing Board, City Housing and Urban Development Department, and the City Engineers Office.
May I request Councilor Abada to be recognized?
Councilor Roger Abada, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor. I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-15.
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item three, Turks.
Item number three, proposed ordinance number 2023-316, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uy, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Department of Science and Technology Regional Office 10, represented by its regional director Romela N. Ratilia, covering the implementation of the National Disaster Risk Management Plan in the RMP through the provision of the DOST Disaster Reduction Technologies and Innovations under the terms and conditions stipulated therein.
May I request that Councilor Bernie Esparsia be recognized?
Councilor Bernie Esparsia, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2023-316.
Second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item five, Turks.
Item number four, proposed resolution number 2023-516, accepting the offer of the City of Sambuanga to forge a sisterhood agreement with the City of Cagayan Dioro to foster and promote exchanges in road safety and in other various fields of endeavors, page Resolution Number 1353, and authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Uy, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, to enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the City Government of Sambuanga, represented by its City Mayor Honorable John M. Delipi, for the purpose, under the terms and conditions stipulated in the attached draft MOU.
May I request, Madam Chair, that the Chairman of the Committee on Sister City Relation, Councilor Suseth McTas, to be recognized.
Councilor Suseth Daba, you are recognized.
Dagang salamat, Madam Chair, and Majority Floor Leader Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-516.
Yes, second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item five.
Item five is proposed ordinance number 2023-317, appropriating the sum of 145,078 pesos and 78 centavos from the item none office general public services sector special purpose fund, terminal leave benefits, monetization of earned leave credits, earmark for Miss Orbilia and Espra, board secretary two of the City Council, city secretary, in the 2023 annual budget to be made available for the full payment of the balance of the terminal leave pay of former City Councilor Dante B. Paho, whose term ended on June 30, 2016.
May I request that Councilor Romeo V. Caliso be recognized, Madam Chair.
Councilor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. May I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023-317?
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
For inclusion, Madam Chair, may I move to include items six and seven?
Any second? Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item six, proposed resolution number 2023-517, approving and or adapting the revised annual investment program, EIP, for COI 2024 of the City Government of Cagayan Dioro, appendix C, attached to the records. May I request that Councilor Yan Lam Lim be recognized?
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, may hapon, I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2023-517.
Any second? Objection? Yes, let me call the Councilor Attorney Joey Abu.
May I just like to confirm, Madam Chair, as I went through the attachment, is the purpose of the revision or amendment of the annual investment program to increase the said proposal for? to increase the said proposal for the proposed loan?
Okay, Counselor, would you like to answer?
Yes, the Chairman of the Committee on Finance.
This AIP is, uh, there's already included the loan to be applied from the bank. So first, we have to approve the AIP. Second is the budget after this.
Counselor Attorney Joey.
And may I also like to ask, Madam Chair, if the attachment in the said revision in the annual investment program is likewise based on the documents presented the other, the previous weeks that we had discussion on this matter?
Yes, Counselor Alam Lim, you can answer.
The previous one is we are going to apply, still applying the bank, which is lower. After this, uh, this will be included in the budget. This time we'll discuss how much is the cost of the property, how much is the cost of improvement.
Yes, because I noticed in the attachment, Madam Chair, the figures indicated therein are the same figures that were discussed previously. So I think it is based on the 65, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, sir?
Yes, Counselor Attorney, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Uh, that is the ballpark estimate of the cost of the purchase of the land. So it is still estimate. We cannot say yet now how much will be the correct figure, but we have the ballpark estimate of that additional inclusion in our AIP, Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's only a plan.
Yes, 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 yes.
That we will spend this amount.
Yes.
But we're not saying that this will be the amount to be spent.
This is a budget allocation for the future plan of contracting alone, yes.
More or less.
So we must have some kind of intelligent guess how much will be that loan. Chair, this is the one, Madam Chair.
But may I just confirm, Madam Presiding Officer, that these figures are also based on the figures that were originally and the actual and the only proposal offered to the city government property?
We can admit that, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Edgar, yes, okay.
Like to interpose the same objection as that of before, Madam Chair.
Okay, so, uh, Counselor, you raise your hand. Counselor Agusuwant, you raise your hand, Agualgo.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Same manifestation I made last week. I agree with the project, but with regards to the loan, I am in disagreement to the loan. So that being said, I abstain from this ordinance, thank you.
Okay, so there's this objection?
Move the division of the house.
Yes, okay, let us divide the house. Those who are in favor of resolution number 2023-517, may raise their right hand. In favor, please count. Twelve in favor. Those who are not in favor, please raise your right hand. Four, so, uh, proposed resolution number 2023-517 is hereby carried.
Is there any abstention? Wala, okay. Okay, so thank you very much, Madam Chair. Move to approve on second final reading.
Any second?
With the same number of votes.
Yeah, with the same number of votes, okay. Second objection, same number of votes, okay? So, uh, motion is hereby carried.
Item seven is the proposed resolution number, number 2023-518, uh, to be moved by all members present, although originally proposed by Counselor Jaime Moreno. Proposed resolution number 2023-518, commending and congratulating spouses Vidal and Merna Mandawi, and their children of barangay Kugmandi City for being declared the model family of Northern Mindanao for ranking third place in the National Natatanging Familia Filipino during the National Family Week celebration of DSWD held last September 25 to 29, 2023, subject to styling. Move, do not gently move, gently seconded.
Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Still, uh, move after approve on second final reading.
Any second objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Uh, ten minutes before four.
Shall we wait until four?
There being other matters to take up, move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, God bless us all, session adjourned.